...session, we have the theme. We have some house meeting. March twenty twenty four. We have a pool of minutes. We have correspondents, we have public hearings, we have two tonight. We sent waiver application for Saudi ship Hamlet in. And we have a committee input for the city's community plan. We have an ordinance and second meeting. An ordinance to amend supplemental right in our ordinances of the city of Brunswick. There goes on traffic, this is in reference to penalties for parking violations. Then we have an online and first ordinance in first week. An ordinance to amend supplemental right in our ordinances of the city of Brunswick. This is in reference to more this week. We have resolution one thirty six, except thirty two. We go one of the agenda amendments. Two of payroll, three of authorization for using cash certificates. Four of the proposal to advertise for the area to go for improvement. Five of relaxation, this is the ordinance and work through the request of my maxing for any works LP. Six of authorization to advertise for the area in a vertical avenue cemetery school improvements. Seven, two of amendment of resolution zero two two three eight. City of Brunswick and township of East Brunswick. Eight, approved request for use of city property requested by the Rose Elementary School. Nine, approved request for use of city property and street closure requested by the MetroCard eight people in the school. Ten, approved request for use of city property requested by the Scott Foundation. Eleven, approved request for use of city properties, retail and use of city sidewalk requested by Kikio City Hall. Twelve, approved request for use of city property requested by Garden State Tractor. Thirteen, approved request for use of city property requested by Hand Subjective Services. Fourteen, approved request for use of city property and foreclosure requested by the inclusive culture center. Fifteen, approved request of use for use of city property requested by the elementary school. Sixteen, approved amendment of resolution zero seven two two three eight. With matrix of engineering, man surveying and landscape architecture. Seventeen, approved time thirty nine amendment between the Aurora and the city of Brunswick. Eighteen, approved resolution authorized in the moral understanding between the city of Brunswick department and the office of emergency management. Nineteen, council resignation of liaison to various authorities, boards and commissioner of twenty twenty four. Partner authority. The members of the city council, Pedro Vasquez and Traffic Commission, Matthew Ferguson. Twenty, approved request for street closure requested by the Community Builders. Twenty one, authorized purchase by Police Department. Well, Michael Stradis. Twenty two, approved order from chair with full time business and change doing business as DTBA. Twenty three, approved request for use of city property requested by Yusuf Shaw. Twenty four, approved request for use of city property requested for C two Alpha of Rutgers University. Twenty five, approved amendment of resolution zero one two three eight. Seven, supplemental services with bright view continuing. Twenty six, application of this and authorization to begin for Indianian services for quality having remain replacement problem. Twenty seven, approved resolution to refer amendments for the National Government Court to the planning board to review and report. One year, approved request for street closing requested by Rutgers University. Twenty nine, authorized purchase by the Police Department on the Jusstar contract from Michael Stradis. Thirty, approved request for use of city property requested by Sigma Alpha Epsilon. The one, this of site performance guarantee of fourteen thousand nine hundred fifteen fifty six and a thousand six hundred eighty six fifty six. And balance of sites inspection please settle forty sixty five to Peter and Allison Berto. Thirty two was called after because of the tax collector. Thirty three, authorized tax collector to track for several tax and utility obligations. Thirty four, approval formation of application to the reserve town twenty twenty four recycling enhancement grant. When you just come to division also waste management. Thirty five, approved person to person and place of place standard of liquor license inactive. Decisive Hammond Matt G. And thirty six, authorized purchase by Police Department. From Apptech Corporation for quality safety equipment accessory close installation services. Then we have item for discussions by council for comment and the city members. We have a dinner review session, and that's on the Wednesday, April third. By thirty, probably even by day. City Council agenda review session, no, not a session, the committee on April third of twenty twenty four. At this time, any special order?
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming is absent. Councilmember Gaskin?
Here.
Councilmember Sikor Ledwick?
Here.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Here.
Council President Escobar?
Here.
Please be advised that the knowledge requirement of the public act has been complacently satisfied. In that the ever notice which gave sufficient hours of the time on place and under the whole public readings of the municipal council of the city of Brunswick. Has been filed with the city, has been placed on the appropriate voting board, the city home, and has been trusted as the official newspaper for the city of Brunswick, mainly the home district.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I just want to say, March has a lot of celebrations, and March is also recognized as Women's Month. And I just want to celebrate and acknowledge the county's contributions and achievements, moments in our society that have made our society. And today, I just want to honor this minute to Councilwoman Gaskin, whose birthday is today, so happy birthday.
Seven. Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin? Councilmember Sikor Ledwick?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Madam Clerk, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate departments?
Yes, Madam President, the correspondence received by the City Service Office was forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. On behalf of public hearings, we have the first one is a distance waiver application. This is in reference to equal license number twelve fourteen thirty three zero three three zero zero four. In relation to the two George Street. Mr. Shami, will you set the stage for this?
Yes, Madam Council President, members of council, the D one matter is a matter of public hearing in connection with the liquor license transfer, person to person, place to place, which is agendized as G thirty five. It is an application for liquor license into Shahshu Hakamont Inc. Pardon the pronunciation. And in connection with this particular license application, there is required a distance waiver application under our ordinances, RGO five point oh eight point one fifty. This location, for purposes of members of the public, is the former Inc. location. In connection with that particular person to person, place to place transfer, it's required that we have an opportunity for any member of the public who wishes to comment about the transfer back to this location due to the fact that it is within hundred or two hundred and fifty feet of the location of another licensed establishment. It is qualified in all other respects with respect to the type of operation. Notified restaurant dispensing liquor with the thirty three license. However, because it is within two hundred and fifty feet, the hearing is required. In connection with the application, the hearing as well as the transfer, I will note for the record that Mr. Belupin is here on behalf of the licensee attorney of the office of Boris Golden. And I suspect if anyone has any questions that I can't answer, he can. I don't think it appropriate that he have to make a presentation at this time. The license application transfer has been republished according to law. And when the council is ready, unless any member of council have any questions, we shall open it up to the public.
Thank you. Any questions or any comments on the public members? So at this time, we are going to open the public hearing on this distance waiver application. You can come up to the mic, you have up to five minutes, one person at a time, I mean, one time up. If anybody wishes to address the council, please.
Yes, good evening, Council, Charlie Cradville. I mostly just wanted to understand what the applicant's plans are, what type of establishment might they be opening, and when might they be doing that?
It is a restaurant establishment, primarily the same type of operation from the fourth plan that the clerk's office received that consisted of the fancy respect of Inc. As far as their plans for whether they'll be up and able to open and operating, I would prefer the council, he has a date in mind, I suspect.
Well, we don't have an exact date in mind, I know that my clients want to move properly on starting their operations. So I would expect to be up and running within weeks, not days, not months.
Got it, and just so I can understand, the license was transferred at some point this year? And if, or I'm sorry, when was it transferred, or?
This, I'm sorry.
You want to answer that one, or you want the city clerk to answer that?
I prefer the Madam Council President.
Go ahead, Mr. Shami.
That's why, just for the, for the benefit of clarity, this is a pocket license currently. So it's a person to person and place to place transfer. So that means it's going to a new owner and to a new location.
Kansas, we have a public hearing today.
Exactly, for the distance waiver and the resolution is on for council's consideration.
Right, and may I ask the price, sale price of the license?
Madam? The sale price of the license is one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's all, yes.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council this morning? Sina?
Motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sikor Ledwick?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Then we have a public hearing developed with community input for the city's community energy plan. Mr. Dominguez, if you could give us a background on this particular public hearing?
Certainly, thank you, Madam President. So back in two, twenty twenty two, the city was awarded community energy, community energy planning grant from the Board of Public Utilities to develop a community energy plan. The city at that point hired a consultant by the name of Greener by Design, who is, who has been and is currently working on that plan, which should be finalized in Q two of twenty twenty four, probably in about a month or two. The plan would enable and give a roadmap for the city to adopt green and clean energy initiatives, improving the vehicle fleet with electric vehicles and hybrids, rolling out community solar information to residents and how they can access programs that will reduce their energy or weatherize their homes. It's just a general planning process, and it will also be a document that, once complete, will open the door for us to access additional grant funds to accomplish these things ourselves in the coming years. As part of the process, the city is required to have a couple of community input sessions. There is a little handout that was out front with some bullet points about the plan planning process. And we welcome community input during this session on, on the bullet points and the general idea as we work to complete the planning process.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from my other members? So at this time, we are going to open the public hearing, you have up to five minutes in person, one time up. If any member of the committee wishes to address the council, please, please come up.
Hi, April, my classmate, there is David Street. So great that there's a public hearing on this, thanks for the, because she handed out. I'm sure Dominguez can mention that there's, what, are you a couple of public hearings on this? Is there another one that's scheduled beyond this one today?
Mr. Dominguez?
So per the BPU, the first meeting that we had when we applied for this count as one, so this is technically the second one, but we are having an additional remote meeting on next Friday at nine AM, which is announced in the paper and I believe is on the city website for as a final session for input.
Thank you.
Okay, and then a couple of specific questions. So I'm looking here at the handout, in strategy one for reducing energy consumption and emissions from the transportation sector. It seems like all four of these methodologies that are laid out here have to do with electric vehicles, which is excellent and great. I'm wondering, you know, is there a plan to also intentionally try and encourage the use of low or no carbon transportation options, such as, you know, public transit, walking and biking?
Dominguez?
I will bring that up with the Greener by Design folks, but if you look just above the section, these are taken right from the state's path to pathway to twenty fifty energy master plan. And I believe there's some semblance of a requirement that we have to sort of align our steps with what they're providing. That's kind of why they're all bullet pointed through the system. So if there's any limitations on that front, they've been kind of thrown in there, not necessarily on our request, but from the drafters of that plan.
Thank you. Don't hesitate to talk to me when you're ready. I appreciate, you know, your comment, and I appreciate your ways of inviting people just, you know, like, pay us some way. I'm sure that we'll come.
Right, right, and, and I, it's been a while since I've looked at the pathway to twenty fifty, you know, right up from the state. So I don't remember exactly what is laid out, I would be completely shocked if there was not very explicitly a strategy laid out to encourage low and no carbon transportation methods. So I, I'm sure there's a lot of other options that are included in that that are not necessarily outlined in this, you know, true pitch handout. So if that is something that is included in, you know, the state's lineup of strategy, but is not for whatever reason included, we encourage us to take a hard look at that. In particular, since we are having the ongoing conversation about the future of George Street and, you know, what the transportation options look like for that, whether or not there will be bike lanes included in that design, whether or not, you know, there will be a one way bus lane included in that design. I think that, you know, now is a particularly, you know, good time to be thinking about the big picture of the, you know, walking, busing, biking options in the city, as we're in that conversation and this conversation at the same time. I would also like to specifically ask what, what partners have been involved in the conversations thus far, aside the consenting firm Greener by Design, has, have there been ongoing conversations with the Office of Climate Action at Rutgers, for example, or Rutgers facilities, or, you know, any nonprofit partners in the space who would be obviously a role to, you know, working with to implement this plan once it's finished?
Mr. Dominguez?
I would have to ask the consultant in their process, they've been sort of running a point on the process, not exactly familiar with every single stakeholder that they've engaged with.
Thank you.
Yeah, it would, it would seem to me that, you know, the Rutgers Office of Climate Action would be probably one of the most obvious partners to engage on this because Rutgers is enormous and right there, and that is the particular office that is specifically charged with implementation of the Rutgers Climate Action Plan, which obviously is heavily intertwined with the, you know, the infrastructure of New Brunswick. This is, you know.
Yes, I think it'd be helpful to understand and remind everyone in the public, I know you're probably familiar with this, but this Greener by Design was hired through a grant for technical assistance through Department of Environmental Protection. So the guidelines in terms of that study are very specific to what the DEP and their partners BPU have assembled. But it's local information, and I'm glad it's being stated now, so as we move through this process, we'll. If we can't, it's because the technical grant didn't permit it, but if we can't consider it otherwise.
Thank you.
Right, and, you know, obviously, whatever the specific technicalities of the, of the grant are and, you know, the plan from the BPU, the sooner that stakeholders are involved, the more successfully they'll be able to be in the implementation process. And obviously, you know, it's not too early to have a public hearing, it's not too early to talk to the major stakeholders.
Thank you. Anybody else with a question?
Hi. This is my first time to a council meeting, so hello. This is pretty opportune, we just talked about energy and change that's coming, and then this nice lady also brought up some interesting things. And I recently launched a company with my wife, who's actually the main founder. She's taking care of our one year old or two year old now. We think we have a solution which might help. I've gotten wind of the downtown project and about the green initiatives, which I'm very supportive of. We've come up with a product, concrete fabricated, a cabin, quite different from what's out there, based out of necessity. And if you will, like, I'm happy to show you some details, but at the end of the day, it's steel reinforced cabin, predominantly glass, reflective exterior, just very beautifully, open space furnished inside. So if there are opportunities to collaborate with Mr. Daniel Dominguez or the township, we'd be happy to do so.
Thank you, at this time we're doing a public hearing on this particular plan?
Oh, so energy is a big part of it because these are self sustaining solar power buildings.
In this program, you have your application, like you were saying, but thank you so much, and we should, we could take information from you. So contact you later, if possible.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradville, just a few items here, I wanted to know the total amount of the grant?
Mr. Dominguez?
Off the top of my head, I, I want to say it was around, I actually can't consistently say, it was like somewhere between thirty to fifty grand. The whole amount is for the entire study, there is no leftover amount, there wasn't a difference.
Is there a deadline?
The, the plan needs to be completed by June thirtieth, I believe.
Okay. Interested to hear, there's a remote meeting to gather more input, what kind of remote meetings? Would it be on Zoom?
Remote, right title?
It will be on GoToMeeting.
Yeah, I was intending to bring this up later, since it's been mentioned now, I think that Zoom is a much more popular piece of software. People are more likely to have it on their devices and have their cameras and microphones hooked up to it. I, you know, I copied you on an email the other day about some of the problems with transparency here. And one easy thing we could do is, you know, use the same software for all the meetings. Some use GoToMeeting, some use Zoom. I can't for the life of me understand why. Is there a reason that this hearing can't be held on Zoom?
I don't know if it's a, if there's a reason, I would ask, but I know for my personal, my job, I am not able to use Zoom. You know, I have to use GoToMeeting because that's the application, that's the, the, the one that we have, because of different resources, right? And I know that around there's some companies that they have to use, they don't allow you to use Zoom, they allow you to use. I don't, I'm not saying that that's the case here, where sometimes it's the confidentiality has encrypted, you know, so there's a few things that you have to take in consideration, but at this time, Mr. Dominguez, is there a specific reason why we usually go to meeting instead of Zoom?
So GoToMeeting is the, the functional software that I have access to to be able to run the meeting, and so that's why I'm using it.
Thank you, as I know the county also uses just GoToMeeting, this is your authority that I can take, and that's the one that they are allowed to use for the time. Yes, Mr. Dominguez?
So Mr. Crowell, happy to know they're all accepted softwares, there's Teams, there's, there's all types. The, the city has and is moving forward with a Zoom arrangement, and we'll be transitioning to that in time. But government purchasing doesn't as quick as the rest of the world. And we do have the Zoom module, we'll be rolling it out, but like everything else, we'll have carefully to make sure that it works and works correctly. This meeting will be on GoToMeeting because that's been working great for the city thus far, and you may see Zoom links in the future.
Of course, good. I don't know if you want to add one.
That's right, we do, we may, we will, we may need table for that reason, but for now, it's been working.
Thanks.
Great, thank you for that info. And I did want to ask about a nightmare of energy aggregation, I know the city had a successful program for energy aggregation, listed here as two point ten. What's the status of that program when, like, residents expect it to return? So the, so each year, on the right time cycle frame, because not just on annual basis, is when, is when our ability to market becomes available. The city goes market through a broker, they seek pricing, and if the pricing has not been competitive enough for the city, it gains in the aggregation to benefit of the residents. So we continue to look, but everyone knows energy prices are very volatile, and aggregations tend to do better when energy pricing is stabilized.
Thank you.
All right, well, I'll note, you know, my understanding is that now is the, the best time of year to go out and seek those bids. So I hope that the city will be doing that soon, especially it's been a while. That's one, one easy thing that can be done. One other easy thing that can be done, I'm, I'm, it's very hot in this room, it's very hot every time I go to City Hall. I don't know why the temperature's turned up so high, I look downstairs, it's seventy six and a half degrees is what the thermostat is set for, I don't even look at this one yet. But an easy way to save energy is not to use it in the first place, and I don't know why it's so hot in this building.
Thank you. And you feel only just like me, you know.
You like, you like this?
Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council? At this time, the public comment part of this public hearing is closed, if you can attend motion.
Councilmember Castaneda? Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmembers Sikor Ledwick?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
We have an ordinance on second meeting, we have ordinance two, and a supplemental right in our ordinances of the city of Brunswick. And ten, there goes on traffic, over one penalty, this is in reference to penalties for parking violations. Mr. Shami, would you like to give a number of this?
Actually, I think Mr. Delgado's here, you like, in a better position to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President, thank you, Mr. TK. So the fines, the fines have not been increased in, in many, many years, and actually, it caught our attention when the meters were increased back in two thousand and twenty three, and we realized that to stay at a meter was, to pay the fine was cheaper than staying at the meter itself, which then led for us to conduct a survey of all the six municipalities, and we realized that we were on the very low end of all those that actually had fine for parking. Parking, as we know, is to be, is a very difficult thing to do, but it deters people from committing violations for various, various traffic issues. And so we conducted the survey, realized that we were below it, and we made a proposal to increase the fines for various traffic violations, parking violations, I should say.
Thank you. Mr. Shami, I apologize, I didn't see, I didn't see you, I had, I had the right person here, and I said there won't one. So does any of my council members, fellow members, have any questions or any questions, comments on these particular organs?
In my understanding, that the parking authority and the police can give out the gifts for these?
Dave? Yes, sir, I mean, both of them are enforced by the, by the parking authority, but there are some that would be enforced by the police department.
At this time, we want to open the floor for public hearing with these ordinance only, you have up to five minutes, one person at a time up. Any member of the public wishes to address, the council will be organized, please move forward.
Hi, yes, my young one, I would say, Councilmember Anderson just really spoke what I was going to say, due to where it is sad that, like I said, I, I gave no applause to the parking authority for doing a great job, but please tell me, why doesn't New Brunswick Police Department give out tickets for violations every time you, I ask you about, ooh, we'll be putting in certain ordinance signs. You say, ooh, this is the reason the ordinance is going through, but like I said, New Brunswick Police Department isn't really writing out any tickets for violated, for violation, even when it comes down to speeding. So like I said, please, due to where we have several, several people, and like I said, I give the parking authority A plus due to where I see they hire more workers, due to where giving out. giving out tickets, I meant, wow, even for George Street, for example, oh, I can see what, what, people violating, due to where, what, you see the police right there, what do, what, they don't give out tickets, why? Please, can somebody ask me why New Brunswick Police Department doesn't give out tickets? Wow, it's not like you haven't seen on video before, like I pointed out before, what, somebody violating something, breaking the law, what, the New Brunswick Police Department do anything for us traffic? I say that's the real situation, due to where, come on, why too many things keep repeatedly happening, why, the New Brunswick Police Department isn't doing their jobs correctly, and I hope to see plenty more tickets written out, due to where, and I say, just like you say, you jack up the price, due to where more is out, that maybe more people will respect the law, and like I said, due to where, please, I hope to see it, but I don't want to have to start doing videos showing, oh, wow, here's New Brunswick Police Department right there, due to where, what, situation, what are they doing, nothing, but like I said, I give thumbs up, A-plus for the parking authority, great job that they've been doing, and I can see throughout the whole New Brunswick, we're giving out tickets, thank you.
Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council, please, may I?
It's Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today, I wanted to ask if there's any estimate of how much revenue these changes would bring in?
Is there a doubt, or do you have any?
I'm not prepared to answer that.
Thank you.
Do we know approximately how many violations are, you know, resulting in fines being paid in a given year, approximately?
Are you ready to ask it, or is that an asset that we will get questions?
I think it's a very fair question, I think it's information that's necessary to make the decision you're about to make, can anybody tell me what the increase in the fines is, are they all increasing by ten bucks each, or all increasing by a certain percentage, I see now we're looking at forty-seven dollar tickets for something like alternate side parking?
All I can suggest is for Mr. Cradaville to look at the old list and then make a comparison with the, what is proposed in the ordinance, and you can figure it out yourself, is that simple?
Hopefully, it will deter people from going, you know, parking where there's not supposed to be parking and move your parts, you know, once you get too far, and you tend to make big decisions, and we put a heat gauge, the challenges that we encounter, you're in the city, many times.
Yeah, I, I'll be very surprised if this leads to an improvement in the ability to find parking space here, I think what it resulted is more money coming in, and I'd like to know, what will that money be used for, is it correct to say that every ticket results in four dollars going to the parking authority, and that will remain the same? Where's all this new money going to go?
Do you have an answer, Mr. Dominguez? Do you have an answer?
I don't want to answer that.
We don't know where the money will go, will it go into the general fund of the city of New Brunswick?
We don't have an answer, we have to speak that.
Can you ask Mr. Shami where the money goes, when someone pays a fine to the park, pays a fine to a violation of these ordinances?
I'm not going to ask that this time, you're not ready for that, can I, keep on going, do you have anything?
Sure, sure, I would just respectfully submit, you're not ready to vote on this if you don't have that information, and I would ask you to hold the ordinance until you can get that information, the public can get that information, I'm kind of surprised that, you know, you're not willing to ask the city attorney for that information here, you know, this is, people work hard for their money, I know that, you know, despite everyone's best efforts, sometimes we leave our car parked someplace too long, we forget about the alternate side parking, and to get hit with a forty-seven dollar ticket because you forgot, doesn't seem like the way we should be treating our own residents, you know, the people who pay alternate side tickets are overwhelming the people who live here, and I, I would like to know, for the alternate side parking tickets, does the authority ticket people after the street sweeper has gone by? Right, the whole point of alternate side is so that the street sweeper can get a pass through, and then, I've been told various things that I want to confirm, does the, the city still issue tickets, even if the street sweeper's already gone through, or if people see the street sweeper go through, can they bring their car back and put it on the side?
Do we have an answer?
And I, you know, hate to say that, I think Mr. Cradaville noted the correct answer, the correct answer is that we do it so we make sure that we clear the road so that the sweeper can come through, so that would have to happen before the act of swiveling streets takes place.
Right, so I want to understand, so folks won't, won't be ticketed if, if the street sweeper's going by and then they, they put their car back on, on that side? Those tickets won't be issued? Is that, is that what I heard? I can...
I think your question was whether or not, when do we ticket, so we ticket, we ticket prior to if your vehicle is there past the time, okay, that is a lot of, when we expect the sweeper to go through, so we don't chase people out, the sweeper is, who didn't take it to people, that doesn't make any sense.
So you coordinate with the DPW to ensure that the authority visits before the street sweeper?
The answer to that is also yes, the answer to that is also yes.
I'm just trying to get this on the record, because I have had situations where my neighbors come to me and say, I got a ticket after the street sweeper came through, and I, I don't think I'm my block is the only block where this happened, so I appreciate the answer, I'm glad that's the intention, and I hope that doesn't happen again, respectfully, I would ask you to hold off on this, I also noticed something here that's not even parking at all, electric scooter running on the sidewalks, why, why is that a part of this?
We actually haven't, haven't touched those, those fines, those fines are there, you know, for the enforcement of scooters, just like it was from the very beginning.
Oh, they're unchanged, all right, well, thank you, nevertheless, I would hold off because you don't have answers about how much money it will bring in, where the money will go, or even what the change is versus the prior.
Thank you, anybody else on the podium?
Carlos Ramirez, reporter in New Brunswick today, I would also like to pack out Mr. Cradaville and to table this ordinance, I feel like if we can't get right numbers, even though there was a study conducted, it's true that New Brunswick is becoming a bigger city, parking is very much a niche to everybody who drives a car, and it's a pain to even find one, or even try to fit in, one, you know, the streets are not all marked with white lines indicating, you know, that that's where a car goes, sometimes people park in a manner that are trying to preserve another spot for another friend or friend members, so I feel like we're not getting straight answers, especially numbers with the money, you know, they always say follow the money, but if we can't get that, I feel like we should table this for a later time, until we can get correct answers, and to say, oh, you can look that up, it's not to look that up, you know, you should respond accordingly and saying, well, you have better access to that, if you work in the department, you have better information, better numbers that you can provide to the public, while one person might have the access to investigate, look at it, the rest of us sitting here might not even know where they're going to go, what to look up in the internet to acquire these documentation, so I feel like we should table this for a later time, thank you.
Anybody else with a public? I just want to make, sometimes, and I understand the public, right, to have the answer, you know, ask questions and information, but sometimes the public expects so much, you know, some information that we don't have already been available, you asking for numbers from a year from now, how many things, you know, and those, you know, some of those questions are usually, they tend to be very, and I call it loaded, for, for lack of a better word, at this time, that you need to really look at it, we don't want to give you the correct information, we want to tell you that it's thirty thousand, it might be less, it might be more, so, so, and sometimes, you know, we have, you know, we have the answer ready, we have, or sometimes we don't, and sometimes we are, we can't provide that information, but nonetheless, we're ready to, to take a motion to, motion?
Motion approved.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sekora Lottway?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, we have an ordinance from first meeting and ordinance two, and a supplemental guidance on ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, chapter ten, views on traffic, chapter ten, twelve, traffic control regulations, long wait streets, and chapter ten, twenty sixteen, stoppage time, and parking, this is in reference to time limit, parking, parking acres, for more reasons.
I know the ordinance, so, you know, I think there are twenty-three, four, five, three, and seven, we have a...
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sekora Lottway? Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, we have first impressions, one, two, thirty-six, except G thirty-two, any questions from my shadow council members, any comments on any of this, I do have some comments or questions to some of them, I think it's Mr. Valenti, which is, oh, there you are, because I missed the one I can, Mr. Valenti, would you give brief overview or information on several, I have several reservations that I would like some information on, number four, six, and thirty-four?
Okay, what we're going to do?
Just, would you give for each of them a report, a overview?
Certainly.
Of all of them, or if you could first, in number four, specifically, what are we doing, what is it for?
All right, specific to number six and number four, and I believe last week or last meeting, we also requested authorization advertisements for the water project, so we would try to combine these, but we did that for Sanford Street, but it's a little more difficult to manage a project because you have different funding sources, specific to the sanitary sewer project on Lee Avon, that's going to be funded through a grant by the EPA, specific to the road improver projects on Lee Avon, that's going to be, that is mostly funded by the NJDOT local slash urban aid fund, and finally, the water project is going to be funded through the cap of the water department, so we tried to consolidate projects, it becomes complicated when it comes to payment time, and whose division has to issue which types of certifications for payments and things of that nature, we found it's a little simpler to, to manage these separately, so that's why there's three different projects, kind of seemingly in the same name regarding Lee Avon.
And you talk a little about the website opening, please?
Certainly, the entire, well, not the entire, the sanitary sewer main will be replaced from Loretto, I believe we're stopping at Sedan, the water is being replaced, I prefer to Mr. Wallace if he's here, I believe from Loretto, I, I want to say it's going to stop at Hale or Comstock, I'm not certain, there's slightly different limitations, and then the roadway Bruton project is from Loretto all the way through, I believe, Comstock Street.
Thank you.
Okay?
And, Mr. Dominguez, if you could talk a little about twenty-seven?
Thank Council President, so, as part of coming into the twenty-first century, what we're looking to do is adopt a similar model, although not quite as advanced, but completely workable for us, is what the county does for their site plan applications, and we're going to be, we're looking to move to a full digital submission system to reduce the paper that we intake to zero, so all applications going forward, should this, you know, go through the planning board process and come back for adoption by ordinance, would require that all applications be submitted digitally, through some sort of media to be determined at this point, either probably through file sharing links or through USB sticks, and so to enable ease of storage, ease of distribution, and ease of review, and so that's the, the goal of this ordinance is to make that change.
Thank you. And, Mr. Dan Hoover, would you talk a little about website opening, number thirty-six?
Thirty-six, Council President, as I understand it, is a downtown security camera initiative.
And we started with all the initial order, we're getting public comments on the resolutions only, anybody anxious to address the council, please come forward, we have five minutes, one time off.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradaville, I'll start with number seven, ends in four forty-one, animal control contract with East Brunswick, can you just tell me what other towns are teaming up with New Brunswick, and is the shelter still the one in Newark?
It's a lower, just one?
We have shared services, okay, me or you?
Oh, sure.
We have active shared services agreements with Spotswood, East Brunswick, and North Brunswick, and the shelter we use is currently North Brunswick and New Brunswick, we utilize the Newark shelter, there are existing agreements in place for North, or East Brunswick and Spotswood, and they use Woodbridge Shelter.
Is there a reason that we don't use the Woodbridge Shelter for New York, North Brunswick?
Because we use the Newark Shelter.
Sure, Newark being rural way, right, is there a reason we don't have a Middlesex County-based shelter? So, the Woodbridge Shelter has capacity, and they build relationships based on capacity, the Newark Shelter has capacity for New Brunswick and Spotswood there.
Thank you.
Thanks. Number eleven, ends in four forty-five, micro mobility conference, I'm curious if the city's a part of this, and looks like there'll be some scooters scooting around in Buckland Park, and figured it'd be a good time to bring up scooters, to see what's going on as far as micro mobility in New Brunswick, what is the city doing? So that the city is providing, people are moving, people are moving, is running the program, and living on that, so this is more just an application for use? Suggested it would be wise to get more involved in the conference, if the city's already not, I'll move on to sixteen, ends in four fifty, Nelson Street Park, I guess this is more funds for the engineer, major team role, what is the status, is this still something we can expect to complete in the, in the year?
Valenti?
Yes, the soil erosion control permit is, has been applied for, as soon as that comes back, we should start pretty quickly, hopefully within a couple of weeks, we're just waiting on the one last state permit.
Thank you.
Number eighteen, ends in four fifty-two, all hazards incident team, agreement with the fire department, can I get an insight into what this is, if anything's changing?
Yes.
Yes, Council President, this is an agreement between the New Jersey Office of Emergency Management and one of our members to join the incident management team, all hazards incident management team that's managed by the state, it's customary that we deploy some of our personnel throughout the state and nationally to kind of hone their knowledge and skills and bring those skills back to the city, just as an agreement for that.
May I ask which member of the department?
Do you have an answer?
Yeah, I do, Fire Inspector Robert Joll.
Number twenty-five, ends in four fifty-nine, bright, few engineer getting ninety thousand dollars, I'm not clear on what this is for, and are there plans to get a, a, a permanent city engineer so that we don't have to keep spending so much money on these firms?
Mr. Valenti, any...
Yeah, specific contract.
Specific to this... Correct, specific to this, this specific contract, is continuation of our supplemental services, contract that we do every year, this is, they assist us in various capacities, primarily a C four operator that files the reports for our sanitary sewer collection system, they also help in the various miscellaneous engineering things that we might need help with, as rates of traffic signals or other, other, any multitude of items that come up that we, they also help with stormwater, there's a number of items.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
I think you would find that the price, the cost of an engineer, bar exceeds ninety thousand dollars, and this amount, this amount, you see it out, none? I just, I just know these other six-figure contracts I've seen, so, raising that issue. Number twenty-seven, ends in four sixty-one, I wanted to say, I think it's good that the city's moving into the twenty-first century and accepting digital submissions from applicants for land use, just want to make sure those documents make their way onto a website so that the public can see them, I know that, yeah, since the pandemic, that's been done, but they vanish after the hearing, I'd like to see them stay.
Thank you, Council President, thank you. Anybody else from the public, just to represent the council resolutions?
Hi, yes, Daniel Moore, firstly, I would say, wow, it's lovely, I hope you continue with your flow, I like how you asked everyone to introduce what the right, certain resolution was, I agree with you about that, I said that's the best way to do it, we're not going to take somebody's time, so I give you thumbs up, A-plus for that, so hopefully, we can continue that way, now, my, my question is with Mr. Valenti, Forestwood, Lee Avon, my concerns, like, okay, after all of this... after all of this, with the water improving and all, where after the roads are finished, will there still be speed funds in the same location that they are before you start the project?
Mr. Valenti, would you have had?
Yes, Madam Council President, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and I guess that I know a lot of few issues due to where with the, with certain roads being done, even though that was P S E M G, due to where causing a lot of damage to certain people's property, where I still haven't seen in this area redone yet, to where P S E M G was going to pay the cost of. So, hopefully, we will see that and hope it's not to see too much damage as we did before when they were replacing the gas lines and everything else. Then, okay, due to Y C on nineteen, due to where, okay, so we don't have a council member, Ferguson, coming to traffic, is that the traffic meetings, the monthly traffic meetings?
Traffic meeting.
Well, okay, like I said, good to see that someone's added on, but I will say, wow, honestly, I'm just very disappointed due to where, what? Honestly, ever since my, my old buddy passed away, honestly, do I see full, full meetings due to where the last one we had this month, due to where, what, only three people, due to where, what, we can't get questions answered, when we don't have our engineer there, due to where, then, what, our engineer there, no one from the police department, due to where, I would love to start seeing our traffic meetings back in session, due to where, like I said, there are many concerns now, due to where, what, that needs to be upgraded. I will say, I know it's one thing at the traffic meeting, due to where, it was good to see that someone, well, it was combined, now we'll have a county and engineer and our own engineer, due to where we don't have to go, go through his set, she set. But like I said, I'm glad to see, due to where someone will be adding on. I just hope to, at the next meeting, to see everyone there, so we can speak on matters.
Please be there, whenever possible.
I'm not saying, I'm not really saying, you, I'm just saying, I'm just saying. And then, due to where, that's what, thirty-four, is this, is this a private, something private recycling, or is this something resident recycling?
Mr. Valenti?
I will defer to Ms. McGuire.
The goal is to use these roll-offs for like recycling for like city residents to do programs that would be run through the D P W.
Well, like I said, a horrible job that this company has been doing. Like I said, oh, did I do a video, what, the week when they, when they littered recycling? Wow, come on, enough with this company. You're wondering where majority of this litter comes from. It's coming from them, due to where, what? I have plenty of videos, due to where, wow, you should have stuck with waste management. I don't understand, what do you keep reassigning someone for, due to where you're seeing multiple complaints, due to where excuses being made? Oh, wow, we didn't even get a dog on into snow, oh, sorry, due to where the recycling company wasn't able to come pick up everyone's recycling. What, that wasn't even a big storm, and what did I say on the city page? Please stop making excuses for this recycling company not doing their job properly, due to where, honestly, I would say they're part of the problem, and due to where, what? It's overpopulated, due to where you're only supposed to allow a certain amount of pickup at a house or two-family house, as was mentioned by Brittany as well, due to where, that's the situation mainly, why our recycling is not being picked up on time. You have senior citizens, you have disabled people, where you keep saying, oh, put it out this day, then they don't come. Oh, please put your recycling back in your house, due to where, back, back and forth, due to where, enough with this company. Friends, another one.
Thank you. Anybody else with a couple of pieces, where the council resolutions? Seeing none, two of the ladies.
Councilmember Casamena?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ledwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, before we go into the public portion part of the meeting, I'm just going to give some updates and just let you aware that I'm going to be leaving, and then Councilman Anderson will continue with the meeting. Just a few updates, some of the things that were from the last time that we met here. There was a question about the daytime, the shelter, how it was going. I happen to report that the center continues to be operating. It's, they operate from Tuesday to Friday, from nine to three. So far, it has been good, there hasn't been any challenges. The staff reports that on any given day, there's five guests there utilizing the center and the services that they provide, so everything is going good as far as, you know, I have been reported. There was a question also about the climate action, action plan, I'm sorry. We gave an update like prior to the last meeting, two weeks, you know, two meetings before that, so there hasn't been any update since. As long as we have any update, I would be the first one to say here and give you an update, I will continue to give updates as I receive them. We have, there was an inquiry about the legal fire director, I'm going to defer this for Mr. Julius to give an update on that.
Sure, that's President Vice Counsel. There was a question relating to the fire director at the last meeting, and I may have misunderstood the question, so I want to make sure that I have your information. On November sixth, twenty twenty-three, approximately ten a.m., Director Walz was involved in a motor vehicle crash on Tower Center Boulevard in East Brunswick. Director Walz was operating the twenty seventeen Chevy Tavo, that's what we all consider a vehicle. While attempting to merge on three eighteen, Director Walz made contact with a twenty sixteen Mazda that was stopped in front of him and was also attempting to merge on three eighteen tomorrow. There were no summons issued as a result of the motor vehicle crash. The twenty seventeen Chevy Tavo sustained minor damage and was drivable from the scene. Repair estimate was repaired by Mako and was scheduled for repair on January third, twenty twenty-four. The vehicle remained at Mako until January third, twenty twenty-four, and was released from building repairs January thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Then, we know that there was a recent shooting here in the city. As discussed already, this council will not make any comments of any active, it still remains an active investigation, so this council will not make any comments related to this unfortunate case. The last time, we also, the last meeting, we have the property owner of eight, also street. There were some concerns that were brought up to us. The next day, I was in touch with Lieutenant Hoover, who completed a very intensive, comprehensive assessment of the area and was able to talk to the owner. This is a very, it's a, it's not an easy solution for what is, you know, the, some of the things that are happening there, but what I will tell you is that Lieutenant Hoover was able to communicate with Mr. Hoover, working with him to try to give the information that he needs to make, some decisions that need to be done in the house also. Just so, there have been some allegations that the police hasn't been there. The police have been since January, have been to let residents and talk to Mr. Dean. Seventy-two times, you start remembering Lieutenant Hoover, right? Seventy-two times.
Seven.
In, in those seventy-two times, they have been plenty, few, plenty of, you know, tickets for trespassing, they have been arrested, and they have, the police has also had some voluntary patrols that they have there, that they have patrol patrols in the area. So, this is an ongoing matter, we just wanted to make sure that Mr. Dean was safe, so, so we can respond to that matter. So, hopefully, some of the things that need to be done will be followed for Mr., you know, by Mr. Dean, and we'll keep, and I also, to see to ensure that his safety is priority to us, and we'll continue to work with him in whatever manner we are able to. So, I thank Lieutenant Hoover for that excellent assessment. Thank you. I think that's it for me, all my updates, if anybody remembers.
Wow. Any other questions? Collins, questions?
Just as a matter of fact, don't forget, before our next council meeting, will be April first, I believe that's the date for resident parking and alternate side of the street parking on different days. That's the day after Easter, so please be careful and watch what you're doing.
Ms. Anderson, so you?
I'm glad you never answered one of my questions.
At this time, we're preparing to open the public meeting comment. Rough to five minutes per person, one time up. Any members of the public wish to speak during this public comments portion of the meeting? Please approach the council microphone. Please give your name and address, and you have up to five minutes.
Good evening, Council Vice President, Charlie Crowe, New Brunswick today. I wanted to start by asking about ambulance service in the city. What's the current arrangement? Who are the providers and what do they provide?
I don't know. I don't have a working relationship with other towns and stuff like that, but I'm told, I know at this point.
Is there somebody who could answer the question? Maybe the V A or someone in emergency management, police, fire department?
I think it's, basically, it was public comments.
We just had a bunch of public comments where questions were referred to.
They were on specific, specific, this is, in terms of public comments, so.
So, you're not going to ask anybody here?
Not at this time.
Ambulance service, okay. Well, I think that's a shame. Got to say, rest in peace to Yumi Simmons murdered in New Brunswick last Tuesday. It's been over a week, there haven't been any updates, no arrests, no charges, another victim fighting for their life. And I saw a disturbing video that Danielle broadcast where, you know, it seemed like the ambulance came quite late for the second victim. There's at least eleven minutes of the video where there's, there's only one ambulance hundreds of feet away tending to another victim before, you know, a second ambulance came, and that ambulance came from North Brunswick Volunteer Squad. I think we deserve answers about who provides the ambulance service and what we're supposed to expect. Can you tell me, is there a mutual aid agreement with North Brunswick Volunteer Squad?
I know that Mr. Barron's working on it, and I know it's a police investigation that's ongoing.
I don't understand what Mr. Barron's working on. Is there an agreement with North Brunswick or not?
And they're working on the questions that you asked, which is all part of this, I think.
Well, he's here, so if he wants to add anything, you could call him, but I believe he gave me a no comment.
That's his rocket.
Right, but you're on the city council, and I'm asking you, who does the ambulance service for New Brunswick, and you're saying you don't know, and you don't, you're unwilling to refer the question to anybody who might know.
And it's not Mr. Barron's working on it.
But that's not what Mr. Barron said. Mr. Barron said, no comment, there's an active investigation. So, we won't even tell you who does the ambulance service for New Brunswick, even as a general matter, right? I'm putting more words in his mouth than what he put in writing, but he declined to comment. The question was asked, and the response was a decline to comment. I'm asking you now, as my elected official, and you're also declining to get any answer?
I don't specifically know, so I don't want to give out any bad information.
Okay, well, I think the public needs to know what Robert Wood Johnson promised us and whether they're living up to it. I know they've taken on a lot of other responsibilities in other towns, but they're based here, and we deserve good quality ambulance service. When somebody's in distress and needs help, we shouldn't have to wait ten, twenty minutes. We're the healthcare city. So, what I saw in that video was unacceptable, and I hope you will get to the bottom of it and report back at the next meeting. This is now the third gun murder in nine months that has been unsolved. So, I'm also concerned about what the police are doing, and, you know, the fact that there are, you know, at least one killer, one or more killers on the loose. This is something that should be addressed by the city council, not enough to say no comment. We didn't elect you to say no comment. Speaking of elections, do you have any comment on Senator Robert Menendez? Do you think he should resign?
I don't have any comment on that.
Okay. Are you running for reelection?
Not yet.
Okay. Do you have any insight on the water utility violations? I asked about this at the last meeting, and I didn't get any more than the prepared statement Mr. Julius had made. Are you concerned about the violations? Are there more than just testing violations? Are there actual results of the tests that are problematic?
I'm not aware of any of the, Mr. Julius, do you have anything more?
The only thing I can add is, bizarre, I'm worried, so we really, please announce that Eric Pinkway, who was our superintendent, Lord Mr. Wallace, tonight is receiving meritorious operator, that was a word that Mr. Wallace got last year, and so, that's one thing I can add, which is. Thank you, Eric, for your service.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore, you know, like I said, I know what I say goes into one ear and out the other, everyone else's questions and answers except mine. I asked you, what, at the last city council meeting, was Alexander Unit, best three twenty-six, when he was suspended sixty days, was that with pay or without pay? Wow, no answer. Oh, I asked you, ooh, with New Brunswick being a sanctuary city, New Brunswick is listed as a sanctuary city, and I think that, where Mr. Crowe has been making a good point for the longest, where you should have had Lieutenant, excuse me, Captain Caputo in here with the meetings, due to where the police department is saying, ooh, this is a sanctuary city, we cannot remove these homeless or whatever from Walgreens, it is listed as a sanctuary city, just as well as you said, ooh, there was no music ordinance. Do I have a recording on it saying, due to where, wow, you get violated up to eight hundred thousand for noise? Tell me, like I said, is that only for block? But I'm going to get to my point. I will say thank you to Lieutenant Hoover and his team, due to where, like I told you, due to where, I didn't know nothing about your plan, but that was the Lord that led me over there at the right time to see all of you. I took the picture, I put it up on, on Facebook saying thank you, but now I'm going to say, please, due to where I'm in pain, now I'm going through a situation with my mom's life, now I'm not doing good, please, can someone please keep an eye on Mr. Dean, due to where last week, wow, his phone collapsed again. I'm just worried about his concerns, like I said, due to where, what, too many people over there are trying to take advantage. I know three people that says, take, help him, like I said, what, I would help him if it wasn't for my injury suffering, where my shoulder is still torn in three locations from New Brunswick Police Department. But like I said, we will be getting to that loss and back to my handled matters with my mom with, with situation. And wow, I can't wait to go to court, due to where, for, for the twenty fifth, for you putting me in handcuffs, wow, I want to see what Judge Hope Hope is going to say to me, due to where, wow, after you releasing Christian Rodriguez Ramirez, what, February ninth, what, still having court cases, wow, he's been arrested five times already, where I have on video with him acting in the school, you talking about location, oh, now he's under arrest after I, because I'm going to take, I'm going to do the recording with my court case, do the census to the news, due to where, like I said, why, if a woman's not a U.S. citizen, illegal immigrant, why are they allowed to do crime and others aren't? You have, I told you, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, how many murders have you let go? Eight, due to where they were not U.S. citizens. Like I said, I love, how many, I love, I, like I said, I'm part of Mexico, I'm not hating, but please, like I said, wow, for, for the way I was treated, like I'm a damn criminal, please, I'm a woman with skills, talent, I am not no damn criminal or prostitute, where I can do matters like this, just, like I said, special visions, just to come up. But like I said, I am going to take this matter to the news, due to where, what, I was a victim and you treat me like a, like I was a criminal? Being harassed by this woman two ti- two times? Oh, man, Alexander Unit, oh, yes, I will say in my prayers, but the Lord has his day, and the same thing with Detective Keith. day, and the same thing with Detective Keith Walcott, let him have his damn day. Because like I said, I do not deserve this, I'm not no damn criminal, a black woman with skills. And like I said, but when you can't treat people equal at all who don't belong to this earth, and I will say for each one of you who voted to pass nine one one seven four five fifty-two hundred to Rutgers, please, I say you should take the blame for, due to where I spoke, due to where it takes too many questions with Rutgers, I don't call, call there, I call seven four five fifty-two twenty-six, Danielle Moore, please get me an ambulance, help for this dislocation, no questions asked. So you should all feel the hurt, due to where, how many lives you are, you voted yes, to keep that at Rutgers, where I kept saying, put it at New Brunswick Police Department. New Brunswick and Rutgers do not share radio, there's no way, it should have took over twenty-five minutes for the police department or the ambulance to respond over there. Normally, I don't do shooting, but I was over there, and someone said, oh, stop, stop shutting the head, head, I'm, you know, I'm shaking like crazy, but wow, the C, what, no ambulance available, you should take the blame, you voted for it.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, a couple of questions, please, um, um, so follow-up question, uh, from something I said earlier during the hearing about, um, the next, uh, hearing for public input on the, uh, community energy plan. Uh, I looked on the website, I can't find anything about that, so I just wanna, uh, know if Mr. Menendez can keep the information shared earlier and tell us where we should expect to find the information.
Thank you.
Sure, I'll, I'll double check in the morning with, uh, with staff that handles the website and ensure that it's like up front and center and, or at least at a minimum in the calendar section with the information available there.
Maybe so, next Friday?
Yes, I know it's the Friday, but I'll be available at nine a.m. to run the meeting, and it's, most people will be available, so hopefully we'll get some attendance.
Okay, um, and then I, I just wanna, um, just ask for a clarification on, uh, on something that, um, uh, Councilman Escobar said during, you know, the updates that she provided just prior to the public comment, um, who provides to, uh, climate action plan and that there are, you know, any new updates on that? I, I just wanna clarify that there's, there are separate, um, conversations happening of, regards to broader climate action plan in addition to the community energy plan, or are those the same thing?
Council Vice President? Yeah, they, uh, they are, they are the same, actually, Council President, it was rather a very specific update that I had given a few meetings ago, and what Mr. Menendez is talking about is part of the same.
Okay, um, got it. Well, I, I would like to say then that, um, I would encourage there to be broader conversations happening about climate action for the city, because while it's excellent to have a, a community energy plan, that's been, you know, a big part of climate action, that's not the whole picture, there's a lot of work, um, to taking action on climate and, and climate, you know, resilience and adaptation, um, beyond just our direct energy use, um, thinking about resilience, like, you know, better stormwater and flood, flood management, um, you know, create infrastructure, tree plantings for carbon sequestration, there's a lot more to climate action than just community energy projects, so, uh, if those are, if there are additional conversations happening beyond that community energy plan, I encourage that to, uh, those conversations to start, because that's also very critical. Um, and, uh, also, uh, with regards to the updates that, as I mentioned, um, earlier, um, regarding the tenement shelter, um, she mentioned that there are, you know, pretty consistently now about five users per day for that space. Uh, I know that it's very ongoing and, and the process, and there's, you know, lots more still to do, but I, um, it does rank that that's a, like, very small number of people per day, um, compared to the size of the problem, um, which obviously we know is quite a bit larger than just a handful of people, um, who would need those services. Uh, so I'm wondering if, you know, future, in the future, uh, more information can be provided on if, um, you know, if we would be hoping to grow that number, if the, you know, if it's just a matter of needing more promotion for those services so that people, um, hear about it and use those services, or if that small number is because of the, um, you know, limitation on the space, if the space is just not large enough to accommodate more than that, or if there's some other, um, you know, issue that you're working with here. And again, I know that it's very early in the launch of, uh, this program, um, but I, you know, it's never too early to start thinking about how we can do things. Um, and then on a similar, you know, related note, um, regards to, you know, uh, homeless shelters provided overnight, obviously, there's, you know, code blue and code red, and, you know, over the summer, there was a, you know, discussion, uh, and some implementation of, you know, other, um, nineteen outage, um, because of air pollution concerns, when it's not safe to breathe the air outside, uh, but as we're moving into a, a future that is increasingly having more and more devastating storms, uh, you know, you know, a range of categories, not just related to hot and cold and not just related to air quality, I'm wondering if there might be an expansion further, uh, you know, um, what stimulus might, might trigger the provision of those services, uh, for example, you know, bad rain storms when we're, you know, on, on recent occasions have gotten warnings from the governor saying it's dangerous to drive, don't go outside, because the, the, uh, the storms are so bad, but if it's not too hot, not too cold, you know, people on the streets are still on, on the streets, um, so I'm just, you know, wondering if there's any ongoing discussions or if discussions might be started to that effect.
I'm pretty sure they're talking about things.
It'd be great to have, uh, further updated on that.
Thank you. Anyone else on the call?
Member?
Better. Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ledwig? Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
It's a sanctuary city.